Accept their recommendation to forward to council or to reject their recommendation to send everything back to their commission?
It's my understanding this matter was previously before this committee, it was forwarded to the city council for action, they referred it back to this committee for another hearing, and this committee is to then make a recommendation to the full city council to either approve the awarding of the concession agreement to Ready Golf or to disapprove it with the recommendation that it go back to the Department of Recreation and Parks.
And the previous, I was the one who referred it back here because we had a change in our committee assignments. Every two years, their committee assignments were changed, and I had two new members. Previously, on this committee, Ms. Perry was on this committee as well as Ms. Han. The committee recommended two to nothing to go forward with the recommendation of the Board of Commissioners, since there was a change in the makeup of the committee and because there was a lot of interest, I thought it would be prudent to have this special meeting, to hear it again, and then to make a determination as we move forward from this time. So if I'd like to call the C A O, the Recreation and Parks, and all who would be pertinent to tell us what's before us and what is the recommendation. We will have a public hearing after that. I and my committee run a one-minute, a public hearing. If you need more time, you're welcome to have time, but a one-minute is when we have the clock operating at this time. But we're going to hear from the committee. So who should we hear from first? C A O?
Good morning. Veronica Salumbires. I'm going to give you a brief overview of what's before you. It is a concession agreement with Michael Leslie Productions doing businesses Ready Golf Centers. The term of the proposed concession agreement is 10 years with one five-year renewal option at the city's discretion. The concession includes the operation and maintenance of electric golf carts at the city's seven eighteen-hole golf courses. To select the contractor for the concession, the department released a request for proposal back in April 2007. In accordance with the request for proposal, the department will use six criteria to select the best proposer, and the six are: one, ability to finance, operate, and sustain the concession; two, qualifications and experience; three, proposed carts and maintenance replacement plan; four, vision for concession including business and marketing plans; five, financial return to the city in form of rental payments; and lastly, capital improvements. The department received five responses to the R F P. A first-level review conducted by the department's staff found three out of five proposers to be responsive. A second level review was then conducted by Economics Research Associates. It's a consultant hired by the department to evaluate the proposals. The consultant found all three responsive proposers to be financially able to provide startup and operational costs as well as capital financing. For the third-level review, a five-member independent panel was convened to review the proposals and interview the proposers.
Who was on that five-level panel?
They are listed in the C A O re-
For the record, if you could-
Okay, they are listed in the board report.
On page two of the C A O report.
Robert Conrad from the city of Victorville, Steve Duran from the county of Los Angeles, Recreation and Parks, Parks and Recreation, Michael Henson, leasing manager from Resources Development Department of Orange County Parks, of Orange County, County, Director of Golf for the Rose Bowl Company of the City of Pasadena, David Sams, and Nancy Woods, sister of Tiger Woods? No, that's not true here, no. Nancy Woods, Business Manager Department of Parks and Recreation City of Santa Barbara. And everybody should kind of relax a little. There's no air conditioning, so I want you all to feel a little good just about being here, number one. Keep on going, Veronica.
The independent panel ranked Ready Golf Centers highest overall, and they receive a score of ninety-seven out of one hundred possible points. Under the terms of the proposed concession, Ready Golf will pay the city thirty-nine percent of gross receipts from the operation of the golf cart concession. They have also committed to invest $100,000 in capital improvements. They will be responsible for utilities relative to their operation except for water and trash collection. Ninety percent of the rental revenue generated from the agreement will be deposited into the department's operating fund. The remaining ten percent will be deposited into the golf concessions improvement account. There is no additional impact on the general fund, and the C A O recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. From Recreation and Parks?
Regina, Regina Adams, Executive Officer from Recreation and Parks, and with me I have Robert Morales, who is the lead in our Administrative Resources Group, who oversees all of our concession agreements. I just wanted to add on to what Veronica just stated in her C A O report. During this process, our commission held several open public meetings on this R F P. We have two of our commissioners who comprise, two of the five, our five commissioners who comprise a concession task force. Many, many hearings were held on this whole process from beginning to end, and so the public was allowed and had many opportunities to provide input and to make, and give their comments to the board. The board even held more than one public meeting itself, the full board, on this particular R F P, and they, and they still forwarded this report to the council, the mayor and the council for approval. Robert, if you have any technical questions regarding the process, Robert can answer those questions. But we just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this process was very open. The commission did take a lot of time to listen to the comments that were presented to it by the various people who came to those meetings, and so we followed every rule, and we worked very, very closely with Mark Brown, our city attorney representative, through this whole process.
This has been, when did the contract expire?
In 2003, January 2003, I believe.
Two thousand and three, and how long was the contract for that contract?
Was it ten years?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, and who had it before?
I think-
Well, Kishi.
Kishi even had before the twelve years too?
Mm-hmm.
So they had it again, and how long had they had it before?
My record, since nineteen seventy-five.
Since nineteen seventy-five, okay. Very good, okay. So give us some more information. You oversee these assets?
Correct.
Right. And how many times since 2003 have we had this, has the commission considered this?
It's been out for R F P three times.
Three times?
Correct.
Right. But this is the first time it's got to council?
Correct.
Right. Want to give us anything more?
Nothing.
You don't have anything else, but you strongly believe in this as a professional, and reviewed this and recommend this. You're the one who oversees it.
This went through a process that was very transparent, very clear. All the criteria, the rating criteria, the ranking criteria was all up front in the R F P. There were no complaints from any parties, any of the public, and the city attorney-
Right.
-on this entire process.
Very good.
I just wanted to add also too, for this last time around, when we started this R F P process, we even took this back to our commission because when the first time around, there were, there were many of the proposers who didn't meet one of the criteria, and so we felt that maybe there was something that wasn't quite clear enough, and we even scrapped that and went and started the process over, and expedited the process to bring this through our board again.
Very good. Before we go further, I want to welcome Herb West, and give Herb a big hand right there. He's due to the committee there.
He just came in the room.
He just came in, that's all right. You come in, and we do that. And also, he's a golfer, so it helps to have a golfer. Do you golf at all then?
Not really.
Have you ever hit?
Couple of times.
Couple of times, oh yeah, in high school.
Let me clarify that, Mr. Chairman. I impersonate a golfer.
Golfer, very good, okay, very good. Would department staff or the city attorney's office want to recommend anything before we open up for public comment?
I'm just here to answer any questions that we have.
Okay.
Or call to decisions we need to make.
Very good, okay. And the city attorney, Flores, right? Thank you very much for the record. Okay, so Mr. West and Mr. Reyes, in my committees, I run a one-minute clock. If people need more time, I would, they'd give them more time if they need them. So we're going to go first with those who are against the proposal or neutral for the proposal. So Jim Dodds, I'm going to call four names, George Horano, and you could take the three names. The seat's right there. And Pauline Shimura, if that's correct, please. This is Why don't you start, then we'll just go over that way. Thank you, Pauline.
Mr. Levant, to members of the committee, I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak with you about the golf cart rental contract with the city. I'm not a political person, and in over the forty years that my family has run the golf cart rental program for this city, we had only one focus: the customers that come in every day renting a golf cart to play on our great city courses. For the past eight years, we've operated with only a month-to-month contract and have continued to provide the best service in carts we can, all without knowing whether or not our contract would expire in thirty days. We understand that our carts are getting older, but it's hard to justify buying brand-new carts when we didn't know if we'd even have the contract the next month. Years ago, we even proposed buying new carts and having the city pay fair market value for them if our contract was not extended. However, this proposal was not accepted by the city. When the R F P was finally released a few years ago, we felt that we needed to present a few basic items to the city: the amount of rent we paid to the city, our longstanding experience renting carts, and our devotion to customer service. We didn't think we'd need to provide a fancy presentation, multiple pricing options, and higher expensive lobbyists. We spent almost half a century working with the city, donating carts to youth programs, providing stand-and-seed on all carts even when it wasn't required, and even when we've been working on a month-to-month contract leasing over a hundred new carts, such as we have in the past year. In addition, I wanted to let you know that before this matter was approved by the committee last month, my husband personally called up and asked if we would be on the July fifteenth agenda. He was informed that Kishi would not be on the agenda, so we didn't know we needed to show up. It's only in hindsight that we learned this was incorrect, although Kishi wasn't on the agenda, this matter was. Although I feel that our company has more experience and would pay the most rent to the city, as a resident of the city of Los Angeles, I know that the offer currently before you undervalues one of the city's valuable assets, and is just a bad deal that should be reconsidered.
Thank you. Just ask you one question. On the fifteenth, who'd you call in July?
The Department of Recreation and Parks.
So, do you know who you talked to?
I don't know who that was.
You don't know? Because no one was there from Kishi at that committee meeting, which surprised me.
Exactly.
But, and then no one's called and complained until this moment right now that they weren't notified. So someone should have made a complaint. I would not have gone forward had not everyone been notified. Madam Clerk, do you have any notification requirements on that? I mean, would everybody be notified on that? Who was?
There are no public notice requirements other than posting the agenda item.
And would Recreation and Parks notify them on the fifteenth of July? Because this is important to know.
On the fifteenth, we received a settlement call from the city attorney's office, and at that time-
You speak to the microphone, just for the record.
Robert Morales, Recreation and Parks. On that morning, we weren't notified that it was on the agenda, so we were unaware.
How do you find that out? I mean, I don't know, because we notify the clerk's office. This was not-
When we start the process, all those proposers that are involved, we notify them what the entire process entails.
Right.
We do not make any phone calls to tell people when it's going to be in the council or anywhere else. We do tell them what the process is at the beginning, and then it's up to everyone-
It's that coming on them to watch whatever it is, okay. Pauline, thank you.
I just instructed Melanie Torres to send a fax of the, of the link, so they were able to tell when the-
Very well. Thank you. George?
Thank you very much. I sent emails to all the council members because I was very, very concerned, and I'd just like to-
Sure, feel comfortable.
And could you give me a-
Take your time, take your time.
Thank you. I attended the Parks and Recreation meetings, and I've come to the conclusion that J. H. Kishi Company was not given a level of playing field in their efforts to continue as a concessionaire. And these are the following reasons that I wanted to lay it out for you. I had an attachment that I sent to the council members, and it showed the Ready Golfers, the Ready Golf group was not even aware of what catastrophic errors were made in their presentation on insurance issues. And they indicated that the liability claim would be covered by their insurance company, and so I wanted to show you that according to the attachments which they had submitted as part of their bid, that the following coverages were not covered or mentioned. General liability, which defends the insured and the city of Los Angeles, was not covered because of a stipulation that specifically excludes the operation of golf carts. And I know from my experience with this concern that the largest hazard that we've had and the largest claims that we've paid outside of the fires were personal liability claims caused by negligent operation of these golf carts. Did not, their, their proposal did not show that the L.A. city buildings that we have on air, all of these facilities, were covered for fire insurance. Workers' compensation insurance was not in, not even mentioned, and loss due to the damages to carts were not, were not even indicated here. And when I pointed this out to the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee meeting, I was rebuffed because a city employee, I'm not going to mention who, who he or she was, made this statement: "Oh, that can be corrected after the contract is awarded." And it led me to believe that this is already preordained, and this was early in the process. So I was, I was very concerned about some kind of political shenanigans being involved, and I asked the council members, please investigate it from that standpoint. And the third point I want to make is, why would the city of Los Angeles, a department of that city, agree to receive thirty-nine percent of the gross income when J. H. Kishi Company has been willing to pay fifty percent of the gross income and have been doing that since the very beginning of time? This would mean approximately, my, my computation is maybe a little bit off, but about four million dollars difference in the total. And J. H. Kishi Company is willing to invest $200,000 in capital improvements, whereas Ready Golf says $100,000. And you take a look at their, their, their balance sheet, and you say, well, where's that hundred, $100,000 going to even come from? The J. H. Kishi Company presently is already staffed with skilled employees, and Ready Golf got to start to hire new ones, train new ones, and purchase equipment after they were awarded the contract. So you have an ongoing firm and a brand-new firm coming in.
All right, we're going to have you to wrap up.
Could you give me thirty seconds then?
Sure.
Okay. J. H. Kishi is the only Japanese-American entity that ever has received a concession from the city of Los Angeles, and they have done a superlative operation in fulfilling the desires of the, of the, of the city. In the past six years, they've worked diligently even without a contract. They're, in spite of that kind of an unstable condition, they have gone out of their way to buy a hundred, $300,000 worth of new carts, a hundred new carts. I don't know how many people would do that, but this is an indication of their desire to remain as partners with the city of Los Angeles. And I think the city council should take a look back and say, why is the Parks and Recreation taking this stand, and when all the logic seems J. H. Kishi is the company that would do the best for the city of Los Angeles? Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Reyes has a question.
Yes. Point of clarification, you're saying that you've already bought a hundred new carts?
Could, could I then?
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yes, my understanding was a hundred new carts are now in service right now.
And how long ago did you purchase them, do you know?
The last two years. Eight months ago. Give me, give me-
Eight months ago?
Eight months ago.
Okay, thank you.
And was it a purchase or a lease, a rental?
Could be one or the other.
But you're not with the company.
I'm not with the company.
But somebody for the company's probably in this car saying, so when they come up, if company references come up, please address those. George, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate that. Mr. Dobbs?
Dodds, yeah. My name's Jim Dodds. I'm a former city employee, retired last year after thirty-five years. My last position with the city was I was a golf supervisor, course manager at the Encino-Baboa complex. Prior to that, I had the same situation and same position at Hanson Dam and Woodley Golf. Now, I'm very familiar with the concessions concerns. I've worked with many, many concessionaires over this thirty-some years. Now Wayne Shim is who called me a couple of weeks ago, and asked me if I would like to say a couple of words about my relationship with the company. I go back with Joe Kishi, who had the company back and started in seventy-five. So I know the whole family, and we've always had a wonderful working relationship. Now, over these years that I've been with the city and knowing the cart concession people, I don't think I can remember one person that came into my office, or knocked on my door, or called me and complained about the service or the personnel at Kishi Company. Let me repeat that. That's a true story. Nobody has ever come in and called me or knocked on my door and complained about service or the personnel. This is important. We're selling public relations at the golf course, a good time in public relations. Kishi over the years with me would let my marshals, my starters, use the carts when our carts break down. They did this regularly. They would help with TV shoots, movie shoots, shotgun tournaments, you name it. We worked together on everything. In fact, how about the police celebrity tournament over the years? I helped them when they headed at Woodley Lakes many years ago. And they had to go out and get extra carts for the V I Ps for that tournament. They do that, they've done it every year for a number of years. And I guess the Fourth of July, it was the past Fourth of July, and Mr. Alacon's district, they loaned carts out for the festival. They had it at Hanson Dam on the Fourth of July.
Very good. Mr. Dobbs, you want to wrap up?
Well, this is pretty quick. I'd like to tell you about ninety-two, ninety-five, ninety-
We're already at two minutes, so I had to give you a minute. So if you want to wrap up, I appreciate it.
Okay. All I can say is in ninety-two, ninety-five, and ninety-seven, we had massive floods out there in the basin. Massive floods. We had to cut down on the Encino course just for nine holes. We were closed from Encino from February to October twenty-sixth, eight and a half, nine months. We lost pretty close to $900,000 in revenue. You know what Kishi did? He kept his employees on payroll. Now, how many people month-to-month would do that? Very, very few in the city.
Are Kishi employees under the livable wage contract with the city of Los Angeles now?
Uh, no, not now.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, thank you. Now we're going to call Eddie Ferraro, is that correct, Eddie?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Brown. Excuse me, Glenn. Call me Tom Labangi. Want to just go across? We'll try to keep it one minute so everybody gets a chance to speak, but if you need a little more, please do, yes.
Hi, my name's Eddie Fierro. I'm forty-four years old. I've worked at the Montebello Country Club thirty-one of those forty-four years. I started off cleaning the locker room, worked the cart room, worked the driving range, and now I'm the head golf professional there. So I have worked every aspect of the golf facility. And along with that, working and running a cart room takes more than just plugging them into the wall, taking the money for the cart, sending them out. There's a lot of maintenance that's required. At our facility alone, we have over a hundred carts, and just for maintenance alone, it's over $3,000 a year, I mean, a month, which comes over $35,000 a year. I couldn't fathom that time, seven golf courses trying to, that's not even just employing a mechanic to fix the carts. So it's, it's a big business. It's a tough business. It's not easy. I have seen every aspect and every part of the business, and it's hard. And with the recession going on, we've, we've lost at least twenty-five percent of our clientele. And the people that we do have, a lot of them are walking because that's just more money out of pocket. So it's really hard to make a big business out of the carts alone. So when you have someone offering you fifty percent versus thirty-nine percent, or whatever they're offering, I would take the fifty percent and run.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to say this. I, I know this man. I've never seen him, though, with long pants on.
[laughing]
Usually he has on shorts and a polo shirt. Anyway, you clean up well.
Thank you.
But I want to know, has he seen you with long pants on before?
I always golf in shorts, regardless of the weather.
Okay, good job. Thank you very much. Thank the city of Montebello. Glenn?
Handout?
Sure.
What I did is I took a quarter inch, a half inch thick pile of data, and I condensed it to one page to, to try to understand better. My name's Glenn Kazahaya. I have over twenty years' experience as a chief financial officer with major healthcare institutions, and ten years' experience as a turnaround consultant. I've been honored and recognized for providing exceptionally valuable consulting services by one of the most notable financial gurus in the world. Although cart rental is not my specialty, numbers are numbers. As a financial specialist, my goal is to focus on the issues that have the greatest financial and operational impact, challenge all of the numbers and assumptions, and weed out the irrelevant data, and prepare recommendations based on the most meaningful data. When I read the general managers' report, I was very impressed by their due diligence in what seemed to be a very thorough process utilized in analyzing the golf carts. However, after a closer review of the report and an analysis how the final rank and scoring, the point systems was allocated, it was clear that the criteria and point scoring methodology that was used to come up with the final decision was flawed. So if you go to row six on that document that I just shared with you, row six shows what the actual revenues were in three-point, in two thousand and six. So everyone's already said it, won't reiterate it, but basically thirty-nine percent versus fifty percent on revenues in two thousand and six, at 3.4 million dollars. That's 376,000. If you take it now to the current period, that's $400,000 a year. Average it out over ten years, over $4 million. The most important rows are going to row thirteen. If you go to third, row thirteen column C, you see sixty-eight points, and that's for Ready Golf, and Kishi had seventy-five points. See that? And the total score that Ready got was 485. They came in the first with 485 on row twenty, and Kishi had 440 points. So what's the difference? For $4 million more over ten years, Kishi got seven points more. If you take seven points and divide it by 485, that means that it was weighted 1.4 percent of the total votes was for $4 million more. The second issue, for experience, they got one more point, ninety-five out of ninety-six, out of 485. That's one point. That's less than two one-thousandths of a point. So you add those up together, they got eight points more, which counted for two percent of the total points for having. Basically, it says, your experience is worth nothing. $4 million is worth two percent.
Thank you very much. Staff, if you could, Kathy, hand that to the department. I want you to analyze this when you call back up after the public comment. Thank you very much for your comments.
Can I have thirty seconds more?
Sure.
If the R F P point process, it was critically flawed, and that demonstrates it. If it addressed the three city objectives, it maximizes revenue, Kishi pays $4 million more, you have an experienced operator, forty years more experience than Ready, and risk management, no lawsuits, if they used a more rational point methodology, then Kishi should have been awarded the golf.
Thank you very much, Glenn.
Good morning, Mr. Levant.
Yes.
My name is Michael Brown. I run a youth organization in the San Fernando Valley. It's Southern California Junior Golf, and I'm also a golf professional, and I've been in the business for about thirty years. The Kishi Golf Cart Company has been very instrumental in all of our youth programs throughout the city of Los Angeles for such a long time. The day-to-day golf operations that it takes to run a golf course is just a lot more than just pro shop, green fees, and maintenance. The Kishi Golf Cart Company employees are sometimes at the golf course earlier in the morning than some of the city employees. The, I've also had experience with both of them, Ready Golf as well as Kishi. I had to operation, my operation had to leave Encino-Baboa Golf Course about seven years ago when Ready Golf came aboard. Some of the programs that were already implemented before Ready Golf got to Encino-Baboa are no longer there. I think that at this time, Kishi Golf Cart Company plays a major factor, and is so much more superior in running the day-to-day operations with the golf cart industry in the city of Los Angeles. Over the past twenty, twenty-five years, I'm not as sure exactly how long they've had the contract, but taking an experienced golf operator versus a non-experienced golf operator is really a no-brainer. is really a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, I have a Mike Brown-
That's me, sir.
-of Woodley Golf Course. And then I have a Michael Brown of West Hills.
That's me. Both of those are me.
All right. But you're in West Hills and you're in-
No, no. That's my address. I'm not, somebody filled out the speaker's-
That's okay. That's all right.
Thank you.
You want to play that? Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call on Abe Tuzubu, Suboy. Thank you, Abe. Bruce Dennison and Doug Ahara. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abe Suboy. I'm kind of representing part of the community. Some of my background is that I ran the Golfer Broke Education Foundation Golf Tournament for about three years, and it's still ongoing, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with that organization. Some of the vets are here. I just wanted to say that through their financial support, moral support with all, with the golf committee and, you know, and donating money, help promoting this tournament, we were able to raise money for the Golfer Broke Education Foundation. And, you know, they continue to do this, and I hope they can get this concession so they continue with the, you know, the relationship that we have.
Right. They can't get this concession, just to let you know. It's either accept the recommendation of the department or rejection.
I understand.
Totally. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Dennison, and everyone here has been quite positive about Kishi, and I incorporate all of their responses and comments. I'm here as a retired defense attorney who have, who has represented public municipalities and insurance companies for many years. And when the issue of choosing and entrusting a contract of this size to a company that has no experience and no qualifications is presented to me, I have to ask you why you would want to sit next to that entity as your co-defendant in a personal injury action that will inevitably follow. Someone is going to be injured on one of these golf courses involving one of these golf carts. And the City of Los Angeles will be the named defendant, and the second named defendant will be Michael Leslie Productions, Inc. And that person and that company will be sitting there, and there'll be a plaintiff's attorney who will be investigating the background of Michael Leslie Productions, Inc. I don't believe that the city has vetted your particular candidates very well. And I think, and I urge you to do so, because as you sit there in that courtroom with a jury, as a plaintiff's lawyer is attacking your co-defendant, it's going to reflect upon the City of Los Angeles. How much do you know about Michael Leslie Productions, Inc., a corporation that's been in existence since the mid-eighties? But as a production company, what else do they produce? What other businesses are they involved in? Is there anything that might be embarrassing to the city? And more importantly, in fact, most importantly, what qualifications have they had as a production company to run a large golf operation of the type we're discussing here?
Thank you.
How this ever-reached counsel, I do not know. I'm here to answer any question.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name's Doug Ahara. I'm here to, I'm the president, current president of the Southern California Niki Golf Association. Just last year, we celebrated its fiftieth year, in no small part to the, to the dreams and efforts of Joe Kishi, as he was one of the founding members of our organization and was very helpful in bringing golf to a, that, back then, a very discriminatory situation. I bring this up today because nowhere is there given any kind of consideration for, for his, that kind of volunteerism in our community. You see the six things that they were, that the requirements that each of these proposals, RFPs, had to show, but nothing is in there that kind of looks at that, that, that fact. And that's one of the things I wanted to make sure the committee understands, is that many of us in this community don't look at Joe Kishi as just a company, but really as a slice of the Japanese-American history. And it's, it's, it's just been a model minority owner for the last forty years. They've, as, as many people have shown, they, they are involved deeply in the committee, uh, community. And I think, I, I just hope that, that the city does something right and awards, makes a better decision for the City of Los Angeles and its golfers.
Thank you, Doug, for your comments. Next, Jason Elias, Ted Winship, Andy Camacho.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. I'm here representing service employees in International Union, which represents about ten thousand city workers, among them, folks who maintain the golf courses. You know, there's a lot of folks in the room. We got nothing against Kishi. We got nothing against Burnback or-
Ready Golf.
Ready Golf, as, as their name is here. However, we're here to try to represent the public interest. We've given back just about three hundred thousand, or we hope to, if our deal goes forward with the early retirement, city employees are willing to sacrifice their raises to keep the city solvent. What we're asking the council to do today is to reject this contract because we believe that the city can make a million dollars more over, every year for the next ten years if they reject the contract and self-operate. There's three reasons why we're asking you to reject this, and I'll make it very brief. Number one, a ten-year contract is much too long, given the economic situation that we're in, economic crisis. If there's even an inkling that we can make more money by self-operation, why do a ten-year contract? Number two, the ten-twenty-two charter section, ten-twenty-two, and also the contracting procedures were not followed in that city self-operation was only considered after the RFP was let and, and a recommendation from Recreation and Parks to, to give the contract to Ready Golf. Then the city's self-operation was compared to, to Ready Golf. Instead of what happened in two thousand and four, and actually, in two thousand and four, Recreation and Parks staff recommended self-operation before an RFP was ever let. So we think that the process was flawed with the ten-twenty-two, and also was a violation of our contract. And then number three, self-operation works. We're already doing self-operation at Harbor Golf Course. Now, given it's a nine-hole golf course, but the net operating income, and this was given to me by the department, two, I believe, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, net operating income for thirty golf carts at Harbor Golf Course was a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
All right? So we're asking to reject it. We're asking that you make a stronger recommendation back to Rec and Parks to immediately begin self-operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Ted?
Thank you for the opportunity of addressing this body. I concur with Jason. I do believe that the City of Los Angeles should be operating the carts. The figures that they have presented were flawed. It's, it's just inconceivable that a person or an entity that has no experience in golf cart operation is given this contract and has been offered eleven percent less of the operating expenses. Now, we all agree on one thing. The city does need carts. I know for a fact that we can produce five hundred carts, brand-new carts, on a lease, a three-year lease, and that the lessor will provide liability insurance coverage in that contract. And there's no reason that the city should not at least give the, you denigrate the ability of the, of your employees when you say that they can't handle this operation. One last thing. One last thing.
I was going to give you a free round of golf if you finished it.
You know, I rehearsed, and I could not fit this in one minute, no matter what I said. I can't get my name out in one minute. But the city, they have the thing called the cap rate. I don't know if anyone's, is knowledgeable about that. It was shown as a four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar charge against the city operating, operation of the carts. However, those monies go to the City of Los Angeles. They don't all go to Recreation and Parks, but they go to the City of Los Angeles. And, but it was shown as an expense. The expense for rental of the carts was seventy-five thousand dollars more for the city to rent these carts than, than the, the winning bidder. And last of all, one last thing. If citizenship counts, this contract should be turned down.
Thank you very much. Mr. Camacho.
Good morning. I am, first of all, not a golfer, even though my cousin is Tommy Camacho from Montebello Golf Course. So he's tried, but nevertheless, to no avail. But only I'm here to speak to you about what I feel could be, if approved, a real mistake for the City of L.A. As a stakeholder in the city, I felt the need to express my disapproval today. As a businessman here in, in Los Angeles, and I'm in the food and beverage business, I have nothing to do with the golf. I have several concessions in restaurants here, not only in the City of L.A., but other surrounding cities, and I just want to see the city get the best deal from an economic perspect, perspective. And, you know, I would agree to a, and I hate to see the city agree to a contract with the city contract that would provide the city with fewer dollars in the future than they currently receive from a vendor. It just doesn't make any financial sense. I've looked over the general manager's report, and in simple black and white terms states that Ready Golf only is proposing thirty-nine percent, as already has been discussed, as opposed to forty-seven that the city currently receives, and fifty cents, fifty percent that the other bidder approved. Any successful businessperson to receive less money for the same object when someone's willing to pay you more, the numbers are very simple. Thirty-nine percent as opposed to fifty percent. That's not prudent. And as a company, and I've responded to many, many RFPs, again, over the last twenty-five years, again, not only here in the city, but other cities, and I can tell you that I've reviewed this RFP and am reverencing one where the emphasis is so misplaced. The emphasis of this RFP, like any concession RFP, should simply be what will bring the city the most funds, followed by whether or not the company has the experience to do the job. Rent should be the most heavily-weighted criteria. Why anyone would write an RFP that gives more points for a business plan than for revenue just doesn't make any sense to me. And the RFP is flawed in many other areas. First rent is given only fifteen points, fewer points than the business plan. Cater does not affect the bottom line of the city. In addition, I do not understand why the city would make ability to finance, quote-unquote, a prerequisite, as should be for a concessionaire to guarantee the stability of the company, also worth fifteen points. Finally, why is the business plan worth more points than anything except, except experience? I know that it's not the business plan that carries the day or even in the end truly matters. Instead, it's the rent. It's the rent. The experience in the actual amount given for things like capital improvements that matters. In this RFP, it appears that the opposite were true, and these are the flaws that I found.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camacho. And you have a lot of experience. I appreciate those comments. Mike Yamaki is our last card of those against the proposal.
Thank you. I'm not going to go over, just to highlight some, some issues to clarify for some of your questions. I'm assuming that you all received a letter from Councilman Parks on the, on the finance. My aunt-
Did you get the letter from Mr. Parks? We got the letter, you got the mail? Okay, good. Thank you.
A founded riveting.
Riveting.
Riveting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to just explain two things. Let me clarify some of the misstatements that are there or differences in, in statement, and then I'm going to say why this is a bad deal for the city. First of all, let me clear up some issues. Mr. Dodds came in, and probably in the seventies, but Joe Kishi and my aunt Margaret Chimu, they started this business, I think, in nineteen sixty-nine.
Just for the record, you said your aunt, so you have a family relationship here.
That's correct.
You're here as a family-
I'm not here as a lawyer. I'm not-
You're here as a family member.
Yes, exactly. Okay. So this is in nineteen sixty-nine that this company started. There's another indication that this has been out of contract since two oh three this morning. That's actually incorrect. The contract, we've been out of contract since nineteen ninety-one. The contract ended in, actually, nineteen ninety-one. There are various elements and everything that happened, so this has been on a thing since nineteen eighty-one. Recently-
Nineteen ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one, correct. Recently, the company has put all their employees on living wage, so we've corrected that issue too. Immediately, they've done that. But the crux of the issue here, and there, there's been some, the last hearing, there was a statement saying that the Kishi Company actually did not provide, within the transcript, any more money back to the city when the question was asked by Janice Hahn, which is incorrect. Kishi Company has offered fifty percent to thirty-nine, so we know what that is. For two decades, eighteen years, this contract has been worth forty-seven percent to the city. Forty-seven percent. There's no reason in this time or any other time to take less. We don't need to sell this asset so cheap at thirty-nine percent. By the RFP and by those numbers, they're not our numbers, I heard someone say these aren't our numbers, but the numbers right there at four point four million more to the city are the numbers that were done in the RFP. So any of you that drove by any golf course this morning, whether it's Rancho, whether it's Sepulveda, if you saw a golf cart, you could put in your head, ka-ching, eleven percent less. So at six AM when that cart went out, that's eleven percent, if you, it's all the way down the line. Now, what this means in terms of money, let's talk about in terms of money. At thirty-nine percent, you, Ready Golf, would have to do ten million more gross to come up to four. Because if you take three, ten million, it's three point nine, they would have to do ten million more in gross. That would come out to be over four thousand something carts a month more than what's going on. There's not enough time in the day. There's probably going to be maybe seven, eight hours of daylight coming toward winter time. You can't rent that many carts. Now, traditionally, the Kishi Company on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday rents out a hundred percent by, by ten AM, which means there's very little left. People here in this, in this city, they're either walkers or they're riders. You can have a Rolls-Royce out there, you might try it once, but that's it. They're either walkers or riders. Now, I'd just like to do a couple of things. What kind of partners are anyone, the Kishi Company, in seventy-nine, they gave seven, seventy-five hundred to protect the golfers at Sepulveda. In nineteen eighty-two, they gave ten thousand to do the indoor partitions. In nineteen eighty-three, they donated at fifteen thousand, twenty-five golf carts to the, to the City of L.A. In nineteen eighty-four, they constructed a permanent addition to the Sepulveda building at thirty thousand. Nineteen eighty-six, thirty-five thousand toward construction for the new wing at Hanson Dam. Nineteen eighty-seven, three thousand, two thousand dollars for re-roofing the Hanson Dam cart. Nineteen eighty-eight, they donated seventy-five thousand toward the construction of new Griffith Park building. Nineteen eighty-nine, they donated twenty-four thousand for the new wiring and Griffith Park building. Nineteen eighty-nine, they donated to Rexon Park. In nineteen ninety-six, twenty-five thousand. In two thousand, they did all, installed all the sand and seed for all the golf carts. So this is the kind of partner that they're going to be. Financial ability, Mr. Dodd said, they took their hits, they didn't do anything else. This is a bad deal for the, for the city. They've worked well. I got to say, well, we've always worked well with the Rexon Park staff. Mr. McCary has always worked hard with us and diligently. I don't think anyone's ever said anything bad about the Kishi Company. Now, today, we need new carts. In two oh five, and this is my last point, in two oh five, and I shared this with Mr. McCary, because some of the people don't remember, in two oh five, we've been out of contract since nineteen ninety-one, we went to them with John and said, "Look, we need to get new carts." We picked club car because at that time, when the city was thinking about self-serving, they wanted club car. So we picked club car. We said, "We'll buy club cars at four thousand each. If you decide to take it over and not give it to us, we will sell it back at market value at twenty-eight hundred dollars," and we made a deal. But through all the different processes, that never, that deal never-
Came to fruition.
Came to fruition, so we've been on a month-to-month.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. That concludes those who are against the proposal. Now for the proposal. Brian Kreps, Donna Lamb, Mark Carj, Carjay?
Carjay.
Carjay, okay, here we go. And then we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Brian Kreps. I'm the current director of golf at Ready Golf Centers. I've been a PGA member for twenty-one years, and prior to joining Michael's team at Ready Golf Centers, I was the director of golf at one of the most highly-decorated resorts in the country, Camel Black Golf Club. And a big portion of that responsibility was managing a fleet of golf carts of a hundred and sixty golf carts. golf carts. And, you know, we've heard a lot about, you know, the lack of experience. We have plenty of firepower on our team, plenty of experience dealing with golf carts, but the real issue is the current state of the golf cars in the city of Los Angeles. It's deplorable, and we're ready to come in and service a new fleet.
Thank you for your comments, Brian. Donna?
I'm Donna Lamb. I'm, I've been a golfer in the city for more than twenty years, and I beg to differ with Mr. Dobbs, but whenever my girlfriends and I go out there and we complain about the horrible golf carts, we've always told, "Just call the city," so he might not have heard of our complaints. And really, all I want to say is that they're terrible. We really want to get them now, new golf carts. This has gone on way too long, and we're just really unhappy with the way it's been.
Thank you, Donna. Mark?
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Mark Cargy. I am the Head Golf Professional at Ready Golf Centers at the Sepulveda Golf Complex. I have been in the golf business for twenty-nine years, last fifteen years as a PGA member. I have run golf cart fleets. I was the Head Golf Pro at the Las Canyons Golf Club in Simi Valley for five years, where we had a fleet of a hundred-and-sixty-two carts plus four beverage carts. So we do have experience with carts, as opposed to what we've heard a little bit here today. We do need new carts. They're dangerous, and they do need to be replaced, and that's why we wanted to take over, have good carts for safety.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call another set of speakers now, but Madam Clerk, this is Mr. Parks' letter. Will you make sure the department gets a copy of that? They can review it. I could just pass that when we come back and ask questions. Next, I'm going to call Gary Shepherd, Doug Lamb, and Bill Thule. Bill Tatum, forgive me, Bill.
Anybody that big you could...
I do forgive, I know, I'm a strong-side linebacker. Come in close. Okay.
My name is Gary Shepherd. I've been an instructor for two years now, and in the golf business for eight years, where I've been at country clubs and familiar with running carts, and they are in terrible condition. They're far too old now, and they need to be replaced now.
Thank you very much, Gary.
David Lamb speaking. My children use these golf courses, and the issue of safety truly concerns me. I'm also really concerned upon hearing these proceedings, that this decision not be delayed and that we not put this issue in limbo. We should move forward, make sure that we do have a wonderful facility for all the people that use it, including my children. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm Bill Tatum. My card got...
Right.
Four Kishi.
You're four Kishi. All right, it's okay, it's a public comment, so you can say, you got a minute?
All right, thank you. All I want to say is, I'm a member of the Los Angeles Police Department, and want to thank Kishi for all they've done for the department as far as the memorial golf tournaments, you know, concern. I know it takes time putting this together. I just want to come and say, hey, we appreciate what they've done for us, the family members, as well as the officers, and they do an excellent job every year they put...
Where do you work?
I work Valley Traffic.
Valley Traffic. How many tickets you write last week?
I book, I book drunk drivers, I don't write tickets.
Very good. Good job there, officer. Thank you very much. Lori Pate, Craig Kessler, and Jerry Newman. This is it. Someone else has questions? Hi, Lori.
My name is Lori Pate. I'm the Secretary to MLP Productions. I just wanted to come here today to let you know that I've been involved with the whole process from start to finish. This RFP was done in accordance with your Recreation and Parks criteria. We are ready to take over, to proceed with this. I encourage you to approve this and let it go forward as your city employees have done a diligent job in doing their due diligence and bring it before you and recommend it, and there has been no flaws in this process, and I encourage you to proceed.
Thank you very much, Lori. Craig Kessler?
Good morning. Mr. Labange, members of the committee, Craig Kessler, Executive Director of Public Links Golf Association of Southern California. I submitted a hard copy of a letter we transmitted to you electronically late last week. It goes into great detail why our organization believes that the process in this particular circumstance, the one that resulted in the recommendation that's before you today, was pretty much pristine, was very much by the book, and it was as open, perhaps even more open than Regina Adams of the Department of Recreation and Parks discussed. Our perspective is not the perspective of the two operators here in the room, or even the union that's in the room here today. We don't have a dollar at stake. We do, if you read the Los Angeles Times on Sunday, have a powerful passion about seeing a situation that's languished for way too many years get rectified finally with some stability. And as Councilmember Labange pointed out to one of the other speakers, what you have in front of you, you're not a court of original jurisdiction. This is not before you. You can't select anyone. You can approve this process, or you can throw it out yet again for a fourth time. Our perspective is a little bit different. If I could have just a little more time, thank you. In that, it is the process that matters to us. This city, this Department of Recreation and Parks, has had nothing but difficulty getting stability into its golf system because it's had difficulty with an RFP process. The truth is that this process was advertised publicly, it was debated at a golf advisory committee, it was debated at various commission meetings, it was debated twice after the award was made, and now we're hearing it being challenged yet again. I wish, I wish some of the parties that were challenging it here today had been in the rooms where I was in the room, where we did have substantial input into this. There are reasons, there are solid reasons. This is not a bid situation. This is a request for proposals for what amounts to really personal services. I think Mr. Wesson has some experience with another government, that sometimes, when you focus a little too much on that top number, I don't know, people with the last name of Duffin or O sometimes end up with lease agreements, much to the pain of the public and much to the pain of the government that tries to oversee them. I've not, because it's not my role, vetted the work of the panel that was independent. I do know a couple of the panel members, and I've not discussed it with them, but I have great respect for them, and I've actually served with both of them on panels in other places, and I know that they understand. I don't know what went on in that room. I'm not sure exactly what's in those RFPs, but I will say, how many bites of the apple does everyone get in this particular process? There is more at stake. Literally, every contract in the golf system, driving ranges, restaurants, are right now on month-to-month agreements. If this council throws this out on the basis that's before you today and asks you to act as a court of original jurisdiction instead of appellate jurisdiction, what you will have done is provide a very roadmap to every incumbent operator and every spurned proposer out there to challenge it. You will have shown them exactly how it needs to be done. That's our perspective, and that's our passion. I like Wayne Shimizu, I like Mike Bernbeck, I like Jason Elias, he's a good friend of mine. That's not the issue for us. The issue for us is validation of a process that was solid, so the Department of Recreation and Parks can move forward with that process and get some stability into a golf system. That department desperately needs the revenue therefrom, and the public deserves more than those carts you heard described in the Los Angeles Times on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Newman?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jerry Newman, representing Ready Golf. I was going to speak a little bit about process, but I think what you just heard encapsulates the reality of where the process is. This has been an incredibly transparent process. It has been vetted more than three times, and in each instance unanimously, everybody that has reviewed this RFP has decided that Ready Golf is the appropriate group to run the city's golf concession. I think it's more than that, though, and I think the reasons are, have to be noted and have to remain apparent. One, Ready Golf has a better business plan. It has, in many ways, created more revenue for the city in its proposal, or shown to be more revenue in its proposal than any other concessionaire that had bid. Let me explain that. Ready Golf bid a number of different options. The department, in trying to create transparency, created a level playing field and created a base case. Reality is, the base case for the other two proposers was their best case. The best case was Ready Golf was a sixty-one percent revenue share with the city. That means the city was able to get, and is still able to get, sixty-one percent of the revenue from the golf concession. Now, in my book, as much as thirty-nine is less than fifty, sixty-one is more than fifty, and that is something that you have available to yourselves. The other reason business plan is important, business plan is important because it is the business plan that does drive revenue into this system. It is not just the numbers. It is not just thirty-nine versus fifty. I appreciate the job that Kishi Company has done for forty years that they have had this concession. In forty years, their ridership amongst golf carts has been at its highest twenty-five percent.
Mr. Newman? Let me interrupt you for a second there. Hold the speaker's time for a second. Throughout the figure, sixty-one percent, can you clarify what that means? When you talk about concession, I mean, just be a little bit more elaborate as to what that sixty-one percent means.
Certainly, it comes to my race. In Ready Golf's proposal, they bid a series of different options for the city, which changed the amount of the rent split that the city was able to get. The base, the lowest, was thirty-four percent, and that is if the city wanted Ready Golf to do a number of additional capital improvements that amounted to approximately half a million dollars of additional capital improvements. In order to put those capital improvements up front, the half a million dollars, they would have to, they'd ask the city to take less rent, thirty-four percent. On the other side of it, at the top end, was sixty-one percent in the options. That sixty-one percent said, "If the city were to allow us, Ready Golf, as the only proposer who bid, to put in GPS systems on the golf carts, not charge to every golfer." If a golfer didn't want to use GPS, they didn't have to. But if they allowed us to do it, and they allowed us to charge a five-dollar rate for the use of that GPS on a pay-per-play, I know that word's horrible, but that's, in golf terms, that's the reality of the word. If on a, if a golfer comes in and they said, "I want to activate the GPS on my cart, and I'll pay you five dollars to do that," if the city accepted that bid, Ready Golf was prepared and has bid, and it is in their current bid to share sixty-one percent of the revenue with the city of Los Angeles.
Sixty-one percent of the five dollars?
No. No, sixty-one percent of the golf cart rental.
For that whole thing.
For that whole thing. Comparing the fifty percent, the same number that the fifty percent is, sixty-one percent instead of thirty-nine. It is an option available to the city.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
Okay. Clear. Continue and wrap up, please.
I, the, the reason business plan is important is because in the forty years that the Kishi Company has had this, the highest amount of ridership, as we understand it, is twenty-four percent. In their bid package, they said twenty-four percent is their ridership. That means only twenty-four percent of the people who come to golf courses in Los Angeles ride in carts, as compared to the county, which is at thirty-four percent. That ten percent, while maybe not seeming to be a huge difference, amounts to a million three a year in revenue. That million three a year in revenue is what, because of a bad business plan, is not being realized by the city of Los Angeles. Now, what we are suggesting is that by having a good business plan, by operating right, by having new carts, by having a means of getting things done in a way that is, has great efficacy for the golfers, results in a higher revenue share to, a higher revenue income to the city.
Thank you. If you could just wrap up.
Wrap up. You talk about good, I heard a lot about good partnership. If my numbers are correct, Kishi Company, over forty years in living off the concession of this city, has provided approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in, in income back to the city, of which I think a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, if I add it up, right, it was running pretty fast, was for their own facilities, or benefited their own facilities. Ready Golf, in the ten years that it has run on a month-to-month basis, has not only invested, which they said is so difficult to do on a month-to-month basis, nearly two-hundred-thousand dollars into the city's facilities, but has given back to the city in terms of donations to youth golf, in terms of community output, over a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Who's a better partner? We believe that we are. We believe that we are doing the right thing by the city. We believe we've had the best proposal. We believe they have the best business plan, and we believe they have the means to do the best for the city of Los Angeles, and it's not important that we believe it. Every commissioner has believed it. Every person who has been a consultant to you has believed it. Every task force member has believed it.
Thank you.
We have been unanimously approved, and we hope that you will do so as well.
Thank you all for, thank everyone for their public comments. I'd like to ask that the department staff return to the tables for questions from the committee. And...
Can we get John?
John, they want John Muckery.
Because I have a couple of quick...
And I want the C.O. up here, too, because the C.O. is very important.
I have a couple of quick questions that I'd like to, to ask. Explain, I don't understand why we have this month-to-month problem.
John Muckery.
Everywhere, apparently.
John Muckery, General Manager, Department of Recreation and Parks. When I took over the department a little over five years ago, virtually every single contract we had was on a month-to-month. It's just, I personally believe it's just too hard for previous general managers to put a request for proposal through the system and get a contract in place.
Why is that?
I believe, I believe some of it rests with the department. We, we did not have a real, I have thirty-five years in contract experience. I have two masters, I did contracting in the federal government, and I was a city's purchasing agent at General Services. So I, I do know contracting, both bid process and RFPs. So I put a lot of effort in an area that it was just easier for my predecessors just to go month-to-month. I'll be honest with you. It's a difficult process. You have to reach out to communities. The city requires you to cast a wide neck. The city desperately wants new vendors to come into the city, family, to do business, and they want them to compete on a level footing.
Now, John, I know that, you know, we're the city, not the county. I don't think any of the county golf courses are on a month-to-month contract. In fact, I don't think they've, they've ever been. So how come they can do it, we have difficulty in not doing it? And also coupled in that, and I did ask this of Mr. Ward some time ago, how come we don't, and I'm not suggesting we do it, but at the county, they have one contract for everything?
That's...
Why is the way that we do things, why do we believe that that is a better way to do things?
Councilmember, you're correct. The most, if you look at most municipal governments who have golf courses, they, they contract out the operation. It's still a core function of recreation, but it's not a core function of the municipal government to provide the staff-to-staff these golf courses. So in the face of the county and others, they use American Golf. And American Golf, then, has the contract to provide everything. The second you go in, it's American Golf. When you get done with the, your playing, it's American Golf. So you have one contract for all the services. We have a hybrid. We have a hybrid service in that we have pro shops run by independent contractors. We, the city of L.A., run the golf course operations. We collect the fees, we maintain it, and then our golf carts, with the exception of one of our golf courses, is done through a contract, and currently, the Kishi Corporation has it on the month-to-month. I don't know what the future holds for the city of L.A. I'll be honest with you. As we face these budget crises, as we face more and more cuts in our personnel, and we're not even, we haven't even started that process yet, we may be going down the path, as most municipal governments are, of contracting out this service in what we now are only taking a fee.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I only have a few more questions. Self-operation of golf courses, where, other than our course, was that Harbor?
Harbor.
Where does that, I mean, is any other municipal entity do that?
You know, I, I'm, I'm a trustee, I'm the only urban parks director and a trustee on the National Recreation and Parks Association. I have not found any successful self-operation across the board. And part of it is because golf has seen a steady decline over the last ten years, and there's an oversaturation in many areas of golf course operations. City of L.A., I think we have a real competitive advantage. We, we service about ten million people, if you look in, in the Southern California. We have some of the premier golf courses. Rancho, and you look at Will Singal Harding, I think we have, we will have a steady group of people coming in. But does that, when you try to bring in city operations with our tremendous overhead costs, and you know, all three of you sat on the city council when my budget, I'm paying nineteen million dollars in direct utility charges this year, it becomes very difficult to justify self-operation when you look at your direct costs, indirect costs, and your liability. Plus, the city is grappling with this e-RIP process in which we will only, as a city, as in which we will only, as a city, as an entire city, if we lose three thousand employees to E-RIP, only seven percent citywide will be allowed to be backfilled. So I have some strong concerns. Right now, is, is it practical for the city to consider self-operation? With all the uncertainties we're facing forward, I think going with a vendor is the, is the right, the smartest thing to do. I don't think ten years is, is too long. I think when you look at the complexity and investment they're gonna make, ten years, probably adequate, plus a five-year option. I just want to say, the process, you, you hired me to come in as general manager to oversee a department. You hired me to come in and make the process pure. This, every contract we do, I can assure you, is done fairly. I don't have a dog in the fight, I put no external pressure on my people. I tell them to go out. In the case of this contract, I said, "We are not gonna do it in-house." We're gonna put all the six criteria together, it's a proposal, not a bid. We're gonna go out, we're gonna RFP it, we're gonna advertise it. Once we get all, collect all the data, and we know that it, uh, the first phases doesn't meet the me, be, we, be outreach, et cetera. Once we have competitive proposals, we put this into another corporation to look at it, and then we, we hired, or we asked five or six people to come to be evaluators. The process was clean.
You know, I was gonna ask you that, but, and I've got a variety of questions, but I'm gonna cut to the chase, the other questions I can ask you, uh, when we get together or maybe as we move forward in trying to come up with a better way to, to run our golf courses, we have the department back and have more time to ask questions. Uh, and I, I do want to say that, in the City of Los Angeles, we're fortunate to have a lot of good, uh, general managers, but I can't think of one, uh, that's better than you are. So I mean, I, I, I think you're a man of honor and, and a man of integrity, and it's always been a pleasure for me to work with your department. But now, let's just cut to the chase. The big, the big thing here, the reason why individuals can come and make a very good argument why we shouldn't move forward with this process is because they're saying fifty percent to thirty-nine percent. So lay all of that out. I mean, I don't understand what Mr. Newman said about, well, you know, the, we had three different price ranges, and then we, to try to make things even, picked the middle one, which was fifty percent, thirty-nine percent, when he just indicated that they had a, a proposal that, uh, for an extra five bucks, you get the GPS system turned on in your vehicle. I mean, so if, if this is re, I mean, you gotta let, is this really thirty-nine percent versus fifty percent? Because I think we put ourselves in a confusing situation. And the last thing, I, I want some answer on, Mr. Chair, like I said, I impersonate a golfer, I am not a golfer. Usually, it's one or two shots that make me come back and spend my fifty bucks the next week out of like hundreds of shots. But, um, I cannot believe, and this is not a knock on anybody, that only twenty-five, twenty-four percent of the carts are rented. I mean, I can't, it, I don't know where that number came from. I go to the course, and it looks like, and I play primarily two city courses, and I play the county courses. I don't play, uh, country clubs unless I'm invited, which is a rarity, because they care about their golf course and don't want people knocking holes and stuff like I do, or hitting people, which I have done twice. I have never got a hole in one, but I've got two golfers, one pretty good. So, um, if, if you can explain to me the real, this real, you know, how, cost in this cart, 'cause I just can't...
The, uh, the ad issue is, each, each proposal was sealed, it is competitively done. When it comes in, we, Ready Golf did have three options that were included in their proposal. We picked one option that did call for thirty-nine percent of the gross. So that's the, that's the basis of the evaluation. That, that proposal for their thirty-nine percent is the one we evaluated against the other two proposers. Kishi did have a fifty percent gross return on their revenue. However, that's only one of six criteria. What we were concerned with, as you know, we've had some bad luck with vendors coming in and having, not having the ability to live up to the terms and conditions of the contract. That's why you have six. We put a lot of weight on the business plan because we felt that would drive the next ten years. So fifty percent was one of the evaluation criteria, and, and no mistake about it. I, you know, I took a lot of math and a lot of college course, a fifty percent is always bigger than thirty-nine percent. But you have to delve down into the other elements, the five elements, to really find out. Rec, recall, everything in these proposals is their best guess going forward. There's nothing locked in some of that. The Greek Theater, our contract with the Greek is a little different. They give us a funding floor, they agree that every year, they will give us one-point-two-million dollars profit. They've always exceeded that. This is all based on a projection of their revenue. Now, Jerry Newman did say twenty-four percent of carts. I have no basis to believe or distrust that. I do know, as of fact, when Mikey Maki came up, I was at that meeting, Jim Hahn was the mayor, and we sat down, Kishi came to me and said, "We need to bring in new golf carts." I said, "Bring in the new golf carts, we will figure out a way to make you whole if, and, in fact, you do not get the contract." Now, that was five years ago. So, um, um, I do not know, in my organization, who turned down that deal. My direct thing was get new carts in because we knew the customers were suffering. Um, again, I have, Kishi's benefiting...
So you were aware that they made that offer?
I, I requested it.
We do not have, I mean, 'cause I, like I said, I love playing at the, the, the city courses I play at, but I mean, the golf carts are horrible, and I don't think that anybody would, uh, disagree with that. I've, I would have jumped at that opportunity to get new, I mean, because at the end of the day, it's, we wanna make a profit, but it's about giving customer service. And it's about, you know, you, you wanna go and ride in a nice, uh, cart. Like, for me, I'll pay that five bucks, and this is not saying I support, uh, the one, but for me, I'll, I like the GPS system. Because I, I've tried to use the little golf caddies and, but, I can't do it. I like it, just push the button on the cart, it says you're a hundred-and-fifteen, then I know what club is, I'm supposed to use.
Let me just clarify that.
Mr. Muckrey, just one more.
I just wanna clarify something because I was at that initial meeting with Mikey Maki and members of Kishi. I thought we had a deal. Somewhere in my own organization, and we fixed this, they turned it down. And that came from my, I do not know why, I do not know when, and I do not know who. Apparently, it was done by a phone call. Every vendor I deal with now, I tell them, "If you get the wrong answer, you call me. Call me directly." And that way, we're gonna, we're gonna foster a better working relationship because I think we lose the fact that no matter who the vendor is, they're partners in providing us service to our customers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Laban.
Have we covered all?
I'm, I'm done, but...
You got it.
This is a, I don't know, we may need to talk again about this.
Yes.
Whatever you wanna do.
Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, I, um, I'm a little frustrated in that, um... When you look at the weights, it's unclear what's being committed to. I do hear the range of thirty-nine to sixty. Yeah, we do have another rate here that's speaking, it's higher than thirty-nine. So, so what are we actually committing to? Again, that's frustrating to me, 'cause I don't know, if we go with the one suggesting the range, what's gonna force them to give us the highest return? So on that level, I mean, there's a lot of ambiguity there. Another level, I see the fact that, um, how do we care, how do we take of our city employees? What makes sense for our city employees if we're going to be dealing with these cutbacks that you speak of? Um, what program allows us to keep the most number of employees employed? And that, to me, is a very significant question that I have yet to hear an answer to.
The, and let me answer that because we've been looking at this for about six months, and I've been, I've been really concerned, your, your same concerns. Currently, we are in a hiring freeze. I have not brought in on any new employees for about six months. We've gone down from...
Except part-time lifeguards and camp counselors.
Well, the summer, summer's a little different, but...
All right, I just want us, for the record, keep going.
Correct, but I'm talking about full-time employees. Uh, we started the year with two-thousand-and-fifty-three full-time positions in our budget. We're down to one-thousand-eight-hundred now. My gut feel is, as we go through this budget process, looking at the numbers, either through the E-RIP or other source, I'm gonna be down to one-thousand-four-hundred full-time employees. I'm gonna have to re, I'm gonna have to, between now and the end of this fiscal year. So I'm gonna have to restructure the department. I can guarantee, every single employee who stays, they will be gainfully employed. I'm not looking to, I, I would rather go through an E-RIP process, take the year and a half when we're gonna have total uncertainty, and I guarantee I'm gonna lose some great people.
But that begs the question, uh, what good are new carts if there's no, there's no employee to have them rented out with?
You're talking about self-operations, Councilmember, and you're correct. Uh, you're asking me, as the general manager, what do I wanna take on the uncertainty now of a new function, given this fact? No. I think there's too much uncertainty going forward. It's, uh, what I do agree with, uh, uh, with our union reps, our employees are great. We have the best employees in the city. But I, there's too much uncertainty to take on a new function. And I think what would better serve the city is we have, uh, we hire somebody to do this workforce under the terms and conditions of a city contract, under the six elements, and then we go forward.
Do we keep the employees with a new contract?
Yes, the, uh, there's always that service, uh, Employee Retention Act that you passed as council members where, if a new vendor came in, they have to keep the employees for a period of time.
Now, in terms of...
And I would tell you this, they have to pay them at the new current living wage. And I was very glad to hear from Kishi saying that they voluntarily, today, started to pay their employees' living wage.
So the, um, this is an old theme, and you've had, I, you and I have had this conversation several times. How we manage our cash flow? How do we manage that point of interaction when a person pulls out those dollars out of their pocket and goes to the hands of employee? Who's tracking that money, and how do we know that money's being put where it's supposed to go?
There, there's a new change to our process now. When, if you go to our golf courses, regardless what happens with this contract, we will now be collecting all the money, either by credit card or cash, at the starter window. Uh, you're right. Today, if you go to a golf course and Kishi's the operator, you would pay me to start, play golf, you would go down to the cart barn and you'd pay them in cash to rent a cart. Uh, it's better accounting for all of us if we collect the money at one central point.
And I just wanna be clear, I'm not making any insinuations about Kishi, I'm talking about just the whole city process in general, this applies in many other functions. So not just Kishi's, I don't want that to be a reflection on Kishi at all.
You're asking me, I don't like cash. I don't like cash anytime, especially in a time like today when we have financial uncertainty. I would rather to use some electronic funds transfer, credit card, or debit card. But many of our patrons pay by class. Faith Mock, who's my chief accountant, we have a very aggressive, uh, audit process. Well, we do ca, in, we do surprise cash counts. I'm gonna, I will tell you today, we have caught some very bad apples in this department. In the very areas that concern you and field, you know, our other sports fields, rentals. And I'm gonna be coming to you with this report in the next day or two. It's, it's, it's embarrassing in some states, but it just tells, if you bring in cash, the temptation is there to do things that we don't want them to do.
Just a point of process, this is about ten minutes before council. Um, this body could either say yes or no, correct?
Correct.
And how much time do we have to say yes or no?
Uh, the, the, we gotta understand, too, the Recreation and Parks Commission is independent, semi-autonomous from the city council. Their recommendation goes into effect, if we make no decision, and council makes no decision, it goes into effect...
September fourth.
September fourth.
So we have up to September fourth?
Which is council.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
No, I, I, a lot of other questions, but running out of time, and you need your time, too, Mr....
Well, no, the only thing that I, I, you know, is a process here, and I, a lot of people, and I, I love history and people who have operated, I've taken notes down here. The thing that disappointed me the most, Mr. Muckrey, and Ms. Adams, you addressed it there, but, uh, I always like to notify everybody, and, uh, because, and everybody knows. But even if, and then someone said they made a phone call, they said it wasn't on the agenda. When, when no one showed up, it makes me feel that they are not care. But still, what's the procedure on that? Is that a consistent in the city attorney? I know it's not a land use thing where you don't notify everybody, but...
We'll look into that and make the best determination for all those involved. We wanna reach out to our consumer base, we want everybody to participate in this. This has been, uh, probably the most open, competitive process I've been involved in in thirty-five years. And, but it, but I understand, I understand times have changed.
Right.
Some things have changed.
On the, on the charter section, you know, uh, ten-twenty-two and self-operation, the challenges I have there is, we are gonna go through bleaker times, and I think the core issues are gonna be to maintain the parks for, uh, the children of this city. Not that children don't play golf and junior golf, but the parks, the rec centers, the pools, things that people are there to that. And you highly say this was a transparent, uh, process, your commission reviewed it twice recently on that?
We've been in front of...
Twice after they had already approved the, the recommended report.
Right. And, uh, and all due respect to the operator forty years and the great history and the diversity that was there, you looked at it in all ways there, that it was the best for the city to move forward with this recommendation.
Yes, committee members, we currently have a relationship with both Kishi and Ready Golf. And so for us, we try to make sure that we distance ourselves, uh, Recreation and Parks employees from the process. And as Mr. Muckrey stated, that's why we did send it out to an independent panel to do the review. But also, too, for us as city employees, we also had to do our due diligence to review what was presented back to us. And that's why we went back and did the further analysis and worked very closely with the city attorney.
Let me interrupt you for a second there. When you said the categories, why was experience, why wasn't it rated? Why wasn't it part of the, the way in fact...
It was part of it, and Kishi rated number one in that particular area. But that's what I'm saying, but the overall score on the other areas, they did not. So that's what I'm saying, that they were rated number one in that particular criteria. Um, but what we had tried to do was, um, we tried to be very diligent because we're also su, seeing that the golf industry, as far as the number of annual rounds, they are decreasing. And so we tried to do our analysis to go back and to see, um, also with another consultant, what was their economic forecast for growth, um, in the next few years, especially up to the next ten years for this contract. And that's why we went back and we did our analysis, even after we had received the, um, recommendation from the independent panel members. We went back and did our further analysis to see where we thought would be prudent for us to think where we, that these vendors could be in the future. And so that's why we also moved forward with the recommendation to the board. Yes, it was fifty percent versus thirty-nine percent, but that wasn't the only criteria. And we were also, too, as Mr. Muckrey stated, we've had experience in the past where vendors have not been able to lend up to what they have presented. Our economic forecaster presented that they thought it would be about at least a two-and-a-half percent, uh, economic growth each fiscal year. Uh, Kishi's proposal jumped way up, way before that. And also, too, uh, Ready Golf's proposal was a little more even keel. So that's why we took a lot of things into consideration when we put together this report to present to our board.
Mr. Chair, just, well, maybe then you can give more of a direct answer. So what, what happens, I, I, explain, what happens with this sixty-one percent? I wanna know what's, what is real and what is not real. If we have to vote on this now, I mean, so, let's say, what you wanna do, we say, "Okay, do it." What, what's, how much money are we gonna get?
We did not take the sixty-one percent proposal into our calculations because, as we stated, we are also, too, over the last few years, for a department, as a department, as a city, we have been increasing the golf fees for the golfers. And so we were looking at, also, with the decrease in the golf rounds, uh, how much we were already charging golfers, and also, too, what the additional cost would be for them for the new golf carts. So we were trying to be very prudent so that we wouldn't price ourselves out of the market because we also, too, have to be very aware of our competitors out there. So those were the things we took into account. We did not take the sixty-one percent into it because we would get, um, there would be additional cost to the golfers. So we were also trying to...
This is the only thing, like I said, we got, we have, we've got a deadline of fright, okay? But I, are you a golfer?
No.
And see, I would debate, I mean, how could you just discount, and I'm not doing this supporting Ready Golf, how could you not but just put the dog-on option on the table? Why don't you let the golfers decide?
It is, it was...
So then that's the answer I'm trying to get.
Okay, and it was there.
What, in the event that we vote for this, it's not fifty percent per cent versus thirty-nine percent? Or is it?
No, no, it is.
So then, so I don't understand, see, this is why...
The, it's very simple, if you look at, Ready Golf gave us three, three options within their proposal.
So can we take any one of them?
No, it's not a negotiation.
So which option we take?
We took the thirty-nine, that's what I'm saying.
So the six, seven, sixty-one percent is just gone?
It's not even part of the evaluation.
Uh, members, what we have before us is to, uh, support the committee, uh, the commission, or reject the commission right now, that's right, Miss, Madam Clerk? But I'd like to start with the clerk first, and then I go to the city attorney and make sure it's right. Madam City Attorney?
All right. What's before you is to make a recommendation to either approve, um, the awarding of the concession agreement to, um, Ready Golf, or to disapprove, um, with the recommendation that it go back to the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners.
Right, I think it's absolutely imperative that we move forward if the department's general manager said this is transparent. manager said this is transparent. Ms. Adams, you were with the CAO's office before. I know you're not a golfer, but you're the CAO's office, you've always had the city's best interest. You're now Assistant General Manager, the number one person in the number two role at Recreation and Parks. You support that. Our CAO analysis supports that, okay? I like all people, okay? But when they come with me at this front here, it's very important to go forward at this time, because I don't believe we're gonna be able to turn it around with self-operation, 'cause there's other pressing issues on this. Members, how do you feel? And if you both feel silent, then we could go forward to council with no recommendation, and then the council could hear it.
My silence is a reflection of this 39%. It makes no sense to me to get involved with a deal that's gonna give the city less revenue. That doesn't make sense. If we're stuck with 39%, if we're going by what's in front of us as a contract, that means we're going to get less over 10 years. Is that right?
You're gonna, you're gonna get a less percentage of whatever growth is generated, and that's why the business plan also played a role in the determination.
So, does the business plan mean we're going to get more than that?
It's all raw dollars at the end, not a percentage of growth. And the independent evaluators felt that Ready Golf's business plan, with all the other factors of golf revenues going down, the growth rate, probably would generate more revenue, and also took into account some of the improvements that...
So, over time, the 39% in real dollars actually will generate more money than the 50% because of the way the business plan has been presented.
That's the independent evaluator. That's correct.
And that's what everyone has evaluated.
And that's what I'm saying, this is all, proposals are projected, your best guess projections going forward.
Who, Mr. Chair, who gets, who gets us new golf carts the soonest?
Everybody.
Wait, wait, I mean...
Ask the general manager, please.
I have, both parties have told me that they can come. In fact, Kishi's ready to bring in new golf carts. Well, I think you said one year old, but...
Well, if we get the proposal, if it goes back...
I know, but here's the problem, here's the problem.
The deal was, they're willing to, if, in fact, we're not successful going forward, Kishi has made a commitment that they would replace their fleet, so...
And Ready Golf is what's their commitment?
They're ready to move right now. So, as soon as, as soon as we award a contractor, they will get a period of time to bring in their team and their staff, and I'm not sure, when, when is the exact date?
If this is not approved by council by this Friday, September 4th, then that would mean for our board, we would go take this back, and Kishi would continue on a month-to-month contract.
But if this is not approved by the...
If this is not approved, which means that we would also, our department and board would have to decide whether or not they would like for us to reissue the RFP, which would take at least another year, or if, as far as for us to self-operate, one of the things Mr. Muckrey did not include is that in this, this economic time, we would also have to try to cover up with startup costs for us to self-operate in addition to the staff, which we at this point know that that's gonna be a big issue, and the liability that our department would take on.
The contract, a normal contract, if we went with Ready Golf, our recommendation, they get 60 to 90 days from the time of award to be ready to go.
But if this was awarded, let's say, on the, on the 5th, executed in, by the 1st of the year, that would mean there would be new carts in the 1st of the year?
Yes.
Okay, and anticipated that. Members, I'm just saying, the frustration that I've heard from people, and it's been a long process of many, many years, whatever the challenges are, I'm not happy with how we process this in Recreation and Parks, but Mr. Muckrey made a good point on how he has these challenges. I say, if we wanna serve the public now, they went through a transparent process, they go forward with this recommendation that was reviewed by the commission, and that's what we should recommend to the council. Now, to go forward from here, someone has to second that, and if someone doesn't wanna second it...
Mr. Chair, out of respect for you, and based on the importance of this discussion, I will second that. I am not saying that come Friday, because there are more questions that I need to ask, and I wanna talk to somebody in the department to see, can adjustments be made after the contract is awarded that would keep the 61% option alive? Because the main argument here is that the 50, 39, even though the department says over years... So, anyway, I will support your motion, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I may, Commissioners, Councilmembers.
Councilmember.
Just to correct two things. One, I think Ms. Adams, when she was stating, she made a misstatement, she said what the contract was disapproved?
If it was, if this item were disapproved by council on Friday, which would be for us to contract...
Rejected.
Reject with, yeah, for us to contract with Ready Golf.
I think the question that Councilmember Wesson asked is what happens if this is approved? How soon could either of the vendors provide the golf carts?
Kishi's ready to go right now. Ready Golf will have 60 days to 90 days to burn in. But the council member's question was not that. The council member said, "Can we reopen negotiations, reopen a proposal with Ready Golf to go to the 61%?" And the answer is no.
I bet you Ready Golf would gladly do.
I'm sure they would, but...
Anyway, I'll talk, like I said, I'm gonna, just for now.
Okay.
For now, I will support that.
And for the record, Mr. Chair, for the record, I'm going to, until I understand and look at how this 39% and the business plan equates to, in your minds, more revenue for the city than the 50%? That, to me, I need to understand much better. Right now, it's not clear to me, and I'd rather abstain at this time. I'll make my decision on Friday. But that's, for me, that's a very, very important factor.
We agree.
And right now, on print, it doesn't feel right, until I understand how that business plan converts to more cash for this city over 10 years. When upfront, we're being told by Kishi, they'll do 50%, which is more, it just doesn't make sense.
All right, thank you very much, so the abstention, and then Mr. Wesson and I will move it forward. I also, with, okay, but also, Mr. Muckrey, I'm concerned about what the first speaker said, how she made a call to your office, and no one knew. I wanna look at the record, Madam Clerk, on the 15th. If anybody there, was there an attorney representing Kishi at that meeting at all? Or whatever, so I wanna look at the record for that.
We'll look at our process.